And for Pledge Legions, the Hammond City Council is now order.
Please remain standing.
Our prayers and blessings go out to all the children and adults who lost their precious lives in the town of Newton in Connecticut. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence for all those people and their families and friends. Thank you. Please be seated. Clerk Golick roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Number three, reading amendments.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
The motion to accept the amendments from November nineteenth, two thousand twelve meeting.
Second. There's a motion by Councilman Spitali to accept the minutes, second by Councilman Kowinski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for a register of claims for November fourteenth through... Doesn't say it right here. November fourteenth through November twelfth, twenty twelve, for council meeting December seventeenth. So that has to be corrected somehow. Um, beginning with claims dated eleven nineteen twelve and ending with claims dated twelve twelve twelve. Claim number five two six eight through claim number five six six seven. For a total of five million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. I so move.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich to accept the claims, second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Councilman Markovich said something about, uh, the dates were not correct. We need to insert the date so it's corrected now on the floor.
What are the correct dates? Do you have them, Carmen?
Do you have a copy of that, Carmen? It should be no... It says November, it's supposed to be December twelfth. So I stand corrected for November fourteen, twenty twelve, through December twelfth, twenty twelve. I so move.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Markovich to accept the claims from eleven fourteen twelve through twelve twelve of twelve, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have some amendments. Claim number five six six eight, Callum McConsul, Boy Scouts donation of two hundred dollars, taken out of a Councilman Spitali's account. Claim number five six six nine, ninety dollars, Pop Warner, All-American Bowl. Taken out of Councilman Henosa for Robert Edwards to attend this, um, football thing.
How much was that for, Councilman?
Ninety dollars. All-American Bowl, offense, defense. Claim number fifty six seventy. Northwest Indiana Regional Bus Authority, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Second installment CAT Training Contract, twenty twelve. Claim number five six seven one, five thousand dollars, Purdue University. Support the Big Cell East Center for twenty thirteen. That's for their entrepreneurship, um, that they have. Claim number fifty six seventy-two, The Jury Box, eight thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. For twelve fourteen, um, five hundred seventy-five people. Charles Turner, claim number five six seven three. DJ Services, five hundred dollars. I so move.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich for the amendments, second by?
Second.
Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
On that, um, on that five six six nine for the ninety dollars for, it's not to Pop Warner, it's for this, uh, uh, Scott Middle School, uh, kid here in eighth grade, uh, that's going to a bowl, uh, out of town. And I guess, uh, Bobby Lindy, uh, it would go under his dad's name, I guess, or Debbie? Uh, Pop Warner? Okay. Thank you. There you go.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion on the additions? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Was there a second to, uh, Councilman Markovich's motion?
Yes, there was. Councilman Spitali.
Yes, Clerk Golick.
Thank you. Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Amendment of claims passes nine zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to have claims five six four one, Attorney Bob Berger for four hundred twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents pulled, and claim number five six four two, Bob Berger, Common Council, nine thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents pulled.
Where were them amounts again, Councilman?
Four twenty-four nineteen and ninety-three ninety-five fifty.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich to pull claim fifty-six forty-one, fifty-six forty-two. Do I have a second?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Uh, what was the reason for him getting pulled?
Well, I need a second, then I can give you the reason.
Yeah. I'll give you a second.
Do I have a second?
Second, just to hear the reason.
Second by Councilman Henosa, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Um, I've had some discussions with, uh, our attorney, and I'm listed on the claim, and I'd just like to discuss with him the outcome and the discussion of his itemization, that's all.
Okay. Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote on pulling the two claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Pulling the claims passes nine zero. Now on the original approval of claims. Passage on the original approval of claims.
Offer the vote.
As amended.
Clerk Golick roll call vote.
As amended. Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass nine zero. Now, number five, public hearings. Public hearing is now open for the appropriation of twenty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars, and also appropriation of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine oh one to Sanitary District. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open, if anybody would like to come and speak. Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Number six, communications. Any communications? Any communications? Communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Here received a correspondence from, um, Frank Mervan in regards to the one point nine million dollar grant he received in terms of, uh, expanding the dollar ride in the city of Hammond, so I wanted to congratulate him on a job well done.
Any other communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I received a certified letter from Robino, Rumun, Crosmar, and Poland, where twenty-one people from the city of Hammond are being sued. And it's unfortunate that what this lawsuit is, it's that, I don't know, twelve, fourteen year old boy that drowned out at Wolf Lake this past summer. The thing that sort of irritates me is that this law firm was the attorney law firm for the Port Authority for the last seven to eight years, and they probably made anywhere between seven hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars, and now they're turning around and they're representing a client and suing the city. I just want to make that known for public record here. Thank you.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Council as a whole would like to be, uh, bringing out twelve dash fifty-seven, twelve dash fifty-eight, twelve dash fifty-nine, twelve dash sixty, and twelve dash sixty-two.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee report is now closed. Clerk Golick, ordinances, third and final reading.
Ordinance twelve dash fifty-seven, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year two thousand thirteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Bring out twelve fifty-seven for final passage, I so move.
Our second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, in the budget, it reflects this year, uh, taking away some funding for two very valuable programs that exist in the city of Hammond that I'm concerned about. One is the paint program, and the second one is the ramp program for the elderly throughout our city. So I'm very much interested in trying to move some numbers around in terms of trying to at least have some funding available for those particular programs.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Uh, on those two items, we do have a want to discuss those. Uh, also too, I, as a realtor, uh, for the, uh, budget for the, uh, uh, CDBGs, uh, the major money comes from our mayor, from his gaming funds, to help out with the homebound program. So there's been a big question about that we were supposedly running out of money for this program, and it's not the case at all.
Luana.
And basically, that's not the case for those other two programs also. We do have funds and within our budget. Whenever we submit our plan to HUD, it's called our action plan, we have to tell HUD how we're gonna expend those dollars. If we have Project A, and we say HUD, we're gonna spend, um, a hundred thousand dollars, and we only spend fifty thousand dollars, that money rolls over until the next year.
Following year.
Exactly. So that's what basically happens. We have money in our budget for those programs, we just don't show it because we don't need to put any in for this year.
And, and Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
My concern was that I didn't see those in the line items in terms of, of funding for the next fiscal year, so I, my concerns were whether or not those programs were to be funded, but if you have money available to be utilized for these very valuable programs, then I'm okay with that.
Yes.
Can you give me a number as into what's gonna roll over for, uh, twenty thirteen?
Um, I don't have those numbers with me, but I can definitely get those to you.
I would appreciate that very much, so, because they are very valuable to the residents of the city of Hammond, and I am very concerned about making sure that those individuals that are less fortunate continue to receive those type of, uh, funding, so, and assistance, should I say, in, in regards to those two particular programs. So I thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Luana.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion on twelve fifty-seven?
Call for the vote, Mr. President.
Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance twelve dash fifty-seven passes nine zero.
Ordinance twelve dash fifty-eight sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
I move for final passage of twelve dash fifty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Yeah, I'd like to amend in twelve dash fifty-eight A.
Second.
It's a motion to amend twelve dash fifty-eight by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Higgs, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
All the amendment is, is to, uh, break down, uh, the twenty-four thousand transfer to, it breaks it down into, uh, where it goes.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich, yes. Spitali, yes. Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance twelve fifty-eight A passes nine zero. Now on twelve fifty-eight A, or twelve fifty-eight.
Twelve fifty-eight as amended, Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Twelve fifty-eight A as amended passes nine zero.
Ordinance twelve dash fifty-nine, sponsor Councilman Opinker, and ordinance to adopt an additional appropriation in excess of the budget for the current year.
President.
Councilman Henosa.
I move for a final passage of twelve dash fifty-nine.
Second.
It's moved by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Spitali, and passes of twelve dash fifty-nine, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance twelve fifty-nine passes nine zero.
Ordinance twelve dash sixty. Sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance to create a new section of chapter ninety-four to regulate the placement of donation boxes in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I request, uh, Clerk Golick to read the ordinance, please.
Whereas the city of Hammond, planning and zoning departments maintain a need for ample parking on commercial lots in accordance with the original site plans of said lots, and whereas those original site plans provided for sufficient site distances for vehicles traveling through and around the lot, and whereas randomly placed multiple large semi-permanent donation boxes in commercial parking lots impede the ability to provide adequate parking as well as obstruct the viewing path of vehicular traffic in and around the sites. And whereas donation boxes, if not rigorally collected by the owner or maintained by the property owner who acts as host for the box, becomes unsightly and contains piles of weather, damaged garbage, and refuse contrary to the Hammond Municipal Code Section ninety-four point zero three eight, and whereas the city of Hammond finds the need in the interest of safety, cleanliness, and quality of life to regulate the placement, maintenance, and location of donation boxes, and therefore be it reordained by the Common Council of the State of Hammond, Indiana, that chapter ninety-four of the Hammond Municipal Code is expanded as follows. Ninety-four point zero zero zero. Donation boxes on private property. Any business, organization, or company in the city of Hammond who wishes to place a drop box on their commercial property shall do so in a manner that does not reduce the number of parking spaces available to the public, nor shall donation boxes be placed on the public right-of-way or on city of Hammond property without the city's express written consent. Two, the owner of the drop box shall place a laminated copy of written permission of the property owner on the exterior of each drop box, which shall include the name and contact information of the property owner as well as the name and contact information of the drop box owner. Drop boxes are not permitted in residential areas. Three, property owners hosting the drop box are responsible for inspecting, maintaining, and removing excess items and litter surrounding the drop box, and failure to do so constitutes a violation of this chapter with the penalty set forth in section ninety-four point nine nine nine. Therefore, be it further ordained that if any part of this ordinance shall be held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder thereof shall not be affected.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of twelve dash sixty.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Kowinski. For final passage, is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, I have received phone calls, uh, particularly in the Robertsdale area, and these, it's the drop boxes are just, it seems like they're popping up all over the city. Uh, the problem that we have is not with the drop boxes, the problem that we have is with the people who deposit their generous donations in the drop boxes, and if the drop box is full, they set them on the outside, uh, of the box, and people go through those and leave a mess in the street. Uh, a lot of people, uh, city employees and volunteers work very hard to try to keep our city clean, and this is just one way that we can make the property owner responsible for the business that they are doing with the, um, uh, the, the company who owns the drop box. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I too have, uh, witnessed actually people, uh, leaving, uh, debris and clothes and TVs throughout my district, instead of putting the materials into the disposable, uh, containers and, uh, recyclable, whatever you wanna call it, in terms of salvaging the merchandise, it's usually, uh, in the parking lot and all over. And what happens if it rains or something, it's no good anyway. If you, if you're donating clothes and you're trying to preserve them for, uh, families or people, uh, the thing to do would probably to make sure they get inside the cubicle and to preserve it so that they don't get deadered and all that, but certainly, I, I agree that something has to be done in terms of addressing this particular issue, and, uh, I applaud, uh, the fact that, uh, something is being done in terms of us stepping up and, and getting some, uh, responsibility as it relates to this.
Any other discussion? Twelve dash sixty. Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance twelve dash sixty passes nine zero.
Ordinance twelve dash sixty-two sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance concerning procedure for adoption of budget.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move that we pass twelve sixty-two on the third and final reading, I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Salinas, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Um, I, I guess the problem that I have is that this, this ordinance is directed directly towards the budget. Why is it that other ordinances that are amended would be exempt from that? Is it because it involves dollars? Uh, wha- what is the purpose for this?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think at the meeting, uh, there was a lot of confusion, and so to avoid that in the future, if we could just get it five days prior to, I think that would alleviate the stress and the strain and all the unnecessary commotion that took place in the last budget, uh, process. And so I think it's only fair to me, as well as my colleagues, that we have appropriate time to review, uh, when dollars are being spent throughout our city. And so if you wanna amend it, I have no problem with that, but that's my thoughts, and that's how I feel personally.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion on twelve dash sixty-two? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich, yes. Spitali.
No.
Vanez.
No.
Calwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
No. Ordinance twelve dash sixty-two fails five four.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twelve dash sixty-three, the petitioner is Marvin Austin, and ordinance classifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as seventy-two oh five Columbia Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
I move, move for first and second reading of twelve dash sixty-three, and to replace in councils whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Spitali. Moving into councils, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Maybe the sponsor of the ordinance can tell to the audience exactly what's going on with that ordinance.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
There's, um, no parti- there's no sponsor, it's just the petitioner, Marvin Austin, and if we can have somebody from, uh, Brian Palmer, somebody explain it? And if we can have somebody from, Brian Palmer, somebody explain it.
He's going to explain again.
Yeah, actually, the petitioner's last name is pronounced Austin. The petitioner is seeking to rezone the property, which is commonly known as the, at least the Hayward branch of the Public Library on Columbia Avenue. He wants to rezone it for the purposes of developing an oil analysis laboratory. And then presuming the C four zoning is approved, ultimately, the petitioner would need to seek a conditional use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals in order to carry out that, that type of use. And just a reminder that this item would need a notice of intent to consider before you take final action. And that would be the, and the second, the following petition that you're going to look at also would need a notice of intent to consider.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes on twelve dash sixty-three. Put into councils as a whole.
Item B, ordinance twelve dash sixty-four sponsored by Councilman Emerson. The petitioner is the Hammond Housing Authority, Golden Manor LP, Saxony Town Homes LP, American Heartland Homes One LLC, American Heartlands Homes Two LLC, and Flagstone Village LLC. And ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, also known as the Hammond Zoning Ordinance, for purposes of adopting a Planned Unit Development District ordinance for the Columbia Center Planned Unit Development, establishing the provisions for the Columbia Center Planned Unit Development as a supplement to the zoning ordinance.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would move for first and second reading and refer to councils as a whole. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
We are fortunate enough to have Mr. Poland and, and the director of the Heartland, it has so many names, Hammond Housing Authority, Ed Al, Ed Al is what I'll say. If she wants to discuss some of it, or I'll leave that up to the body. She is here though. Would you, would you mind? Okay, appreciate it.
Hi, good evening. Well, are there any questions specific to what we're doing? Or should I just briefly explain?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess the question would be as to what exactly is taking place.
What you're approving right now, the revision, it's basically relocating the units, the amount of units on the parcels. Currently, the first PUD had bedroom units for one, two, three, and four bedrooms. We're only going to do one and two bedroom units. And we're also going to be relocating some of the units between the parcels, a little bit different than what was originally put in the master plan back in two thousand and three.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
How many additional complexes you, to complete this process? How many more you have to do?
This will be the final phase. And then everything will be done, yes.
I particularly like the senior building. It's really nice.
Thank you, it is a nice building.
Really nice.
This one, I believe, is going to be a lot nicer.
Thumbs up, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Thank you.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Number ten, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution twelve R dash twenty-four sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution to reappoint Gregory Myrex to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of twelve R twenty-four for the reappointment of Gregory Myrex.
Second.
Who's in attendance tonight to the redevelopment commission. I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Resolution passes nine to zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Number eleven, new and unfinished business. First of all, under new and unfinished business, I'd like to wish everybody in the City of Hammond, all our families and friends, a Merry Christmas and a Blessed New Year. Our next council meeting will be January fourteenth. And also, I'd like to wish Clerk Golick a happy birthday, which is his birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday to you.
Thirty-five.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
He has a younger brother that's got a birthday tomorrow too, and that's our cameraman Jake Jacobs.
Oh, how about that, Jake Jacobs.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Under the new and unfinished business, I'd like to go back and on claim number five six four one for Bob Berger for four hundred twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents. I'd like to go ahead and okay for that, that claim for approval because that was for training, that he went to Indianapolis for law classes. I so move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to add claim fifty-six forty-one for four sixty-four nineteen. Is there any discussion?
Four twenty-four nineteen.
Four twenty-four nineteen. Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Additional claim passes nine zero.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Recently, one of my constituents contacted me in regards to their home being vandalized and broken into in the ten hundred block of Morris. So I am requesting, I know I do ride-bys and, and I should say drive-bys in terms of looking at Nipco lighting and ornamental lighting and making sure that the lights are on. But in this particular block between the ten hundred block of Highland and Morris, there are no lights on in the alley, as well as the eleven hundred block of Merle and Morris in the alley, there are no lights there. And I submitted a list of lights, Nipco pole lights that I were requesting to have them fixed. But those particular areas, I would requested that if we can get Nipco out there as quickly as possible, it would be greatly appreciated. So I'm requesting to let it go to, to the engineering department as well as Nipco, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, a second by Councilman Henoza to send a letter to engineering in regards to certain lighting poles. All those in favor?
That was engineering and Nipco.
Engineering and Nipco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I'd like to let everyone know that Thursday at Hammond High School, the Eastside Community Council is having a toy giveaway. It begins at six o'clock, and it's children from zero to seventeen. So if you know a family in need that may not have very much for their children for Christmas, please bring them over to Hammond High. That's at six o'clock on Thursday.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President, I'm just going to read a letter that I submitted to the mayor's office. It says, "As Councilman of the Third District, it really disturbs me to read today's edition of the Times regarding the possible relocation of Walmart. I have already started receiving numerous calls and from concerned residents in my district regarding the fact that Walmart may be relocating out of the Third District. I and many others agree that this store is a great asset to the Third District and the residents that shop there. As I understand it, the location is one of the top producing stores, that Walmart has no possibility of moving, or maybe a possibility, it's useless to even think that this would possibly happen in the Third District. To move this store to a location near Cabela's in the Fifth District seems unfair to me since a great many of my residents not only shop there, but also are employed there. I am sure the inconvenience of not having a bus service could prohibit many of the already existing customers and employees from getting to the new location. I pray that you please rethink this situation and give consideration to all the people that move and would, this would affect. If you would like to discuss this situation with me, please do not hesitate to contact me at my home or office. Sincerely, Anthony W. Higgs, Third District Councilman Hammond, Common Council."
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
In light of that, I can't find the minutes of the meeting, but I know when that thing hit the newspaper, there were several questions on the radio station about it. And I think that Phil's gone already. But I remember reading some minutes about it that had something to do when they built this Walmart store, the one on one hundred sixty-fifth street, they were not allowed to have groceries and so forth and that. And the new one, if they do build it by Cabela's, there, I guess it'll be a super Walmart, and they're going to expand and they'll have groceries and what have you and all of that. And from what I understand, just reading those minutes, is that the city is being paid, I think, two and a quarter million dollars for, to let Walmart out of the agreement with the city and have that building stay in there at one hundred sixty-fifth street. The way Phil explained it is they more or less have a gun to our heads in the fact that if we don't okay it and take the two hundred twenty-five million dollars, there's no guarantee that they're going to build that store at Cabela's. They may move to another city altogether. So, I mean, they just may close that store and there's nothing we can do about it. So that's what the deal with that two and a quarter million dollars is, to try and get something, and something is better than nothing. In this case, it's two and a quarter million dollars. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
In keeping with the season, I received an email regarding recovering American soldiers. And I'm sure my colleague, Councilman Spitali, our own mayor, and myself can attest to, and maybe some more people, I don't mean to leave anybody out, can attest to how important mail is. I, for one, didn't even care who the mail was from as long as I got mail from someone while overseas, or, you know, for those in the States. This goes beyond that, though. This is, program is called a Recovering American Soldier. And when writing your Christmas cards, take time to send to, to the following address. And they will take care of that. Recovering American Soldier, care of Walter Reed Army Medical Center, sixty-nine hundred Georgia Avenue Northwest, Washington DC, two oh three oh seven dash five oh oh one. I was just doing my duty. These, these men and women were wounded in Iraq and Afghanistan. And I really think a Christmas card would make their day. So, thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
For those who are interested in knowing what's going on in your neighborhood and looking to do some good in your neighborhood, there are a couple of crime watch meetings coming up just before Christmas. Tomorrow, Tuesday, December eighteenth, East Hammond Crime Watch at the Ophelia Steen Center meets at six thirty. And Thursday, December twentieth, the South Hammond Crime Watch meets at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at seven PM. After the first of the year, Whiting, Robertsdale will meet on Thursday, January tenth at Calumet College at six thirty PM. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Earlier in the meeting, Councilman Higgs had an ordinance about as far as making changes to the budget. And I guess the reason for that ordinance was for, you know, when there's major changes being made to a budget, that it drastically affects a lot of people. And one of the things is here is a letter I have dated October twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, which was the date of that city council meeting where the budget was being passed. Says, "Dear Councilmembers, as your administrative assistant, I am writing this letter to inform you of my plans to retire. My last working day will be on January fourth, two thousand and thirteen, with a retirement date at the end of February using my accumulated time for the year. My job in the council office has been a very interesting position where I have both learned a lot and most importantly, made some very long and lasting relationships. If you have any questions regarding this announcement, please do not hesitate to contact me." But what had happened that night during that budget, Councilman Kowinski came up with a new budget for the city council. And what he did is he eliminated our secretary. He zeroed it out. So on January fourth, we no longer have a secretary. And I know there was a big debate about it and a lot of misconception and so forth. And, you know, I was really trying to point out to my colleagues what they were doing was, was a gross, well, negligence on their part to not to truly fund the city council office. Because what they did on January first, they eliminated our secretary, Debbie Jimenez. She no longer has a job with us, according to this budget. Linda's going to be gone all the way to the end of February. That's roughly eight weeks, with her vacation time, sick time, and so forth and all of that. So I'm just, want to ask Councilman Kowinski and Councilman Spitali and Emerson and Opinker, what are we going to do January first? Because we're not going to have a secretary, anybody in that office, January fourth. And I'd just like to know how that's going to be handled so we can have a smooth transition into the beginning of next year. And I would hope that, you know, in this discussion, and Councilwoman Vines, that you guys would chime in and for the record and set it straight, how are we going to conduct business in the city council office after the first of the year? And I'm open to your discussions, recommendations, and comments and so forth. Because this is a serious thing here. Debbie does not have a job January first. And I want to know how we're going to operate that office. Seeing how that was blindsided the rest of the councilmen, and that was the purpose of Councilmen's earlier ordinance, that anybody makes drastic changes like that that notify the council or department heads five days in advance. And what had happened is, Councilman Kowinski went down to the controller's office and had a new budget printed up and eliminated our secretary. January first, she is no longer employed by the city, according to our budget. And I just want to know how that's going to happen? How are we going to operate? And what do you guys plan on doing? It's a very serious situation, and it needs to be addressed. And we need to let Debbie know what's going on because as far as I know, she's in limbo and she doesn't know what's going on either. So the five or six people that voted for it, I would hope that you would come up with your ideas, comments, and resolutions, how we're going to handle this January first, so Debbie can know what's going on. There are several jobs being posted throughout the city that she may have to bid on for her to have a job. So for the record, I, I would like for you guys to come forth and say, what are we going to do?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I don't know where Councilman Markovich gets the impression that Debbie is not going to have a job after the first of the year. She is, it's my understanding she is going to take over Linda's responsibilities, and the two jobs will be merged into one. That's number one. Number two, how are we going to handle things in the office? At the caucus meeting last month, I asked how everyone felt, all of the council people, felt about having their correspondence emailed to them as opposed to making copies for nine people, using toner for nine people, using paper, using envelopes, using time to make all of those copies. So what is going to happen? And you should have gotten something in Debbie passed out tonight that we all now have email addresses with the Go Hammond, and we are going to receive our, our mail that way unless it comes in a sealed envelope. It's going to be scanned, it's going to come to our email address. So that's going to- gonna be scanned, it's going to come to our email address. So that's going to eliminate a lot of the time that Debbie and Linda spent in the office, making nine copies for all of these, for all of us. As far as, you know, your insinuation that this was an irresponsible move on the part of the city council, I beg to differ. There have been cuts in every department in this city, and we have not had any cuts. We've had two people. Granted, I've only been on the council a little bit over a year, but I haven't asked for that much to be done. I write my own letters, I send my own emails, I do my, make my own phone calls. I do not see how having one person in that office is going to jeopardize the job that we have to do. I don't know, how many, how many-
Mr. President.
Excuse me. How many of the councilmen come and sit in the office in there to make phone calls, or to make copies, or to send letters? I think that, I think that it was a responsible move to save money, and that's, that is one of our responsibilities. And in due respect, Councilman Markovich, all of your campaign material called you the taxpayers' watchdog.
Thank you very much. It's true.
So, so that's what I'm saying.
That's why I'm bringing this up now.
So my point is, this is an area that we could make a cut and still continue to serve the residents of the city of Hammond at the same level of professionalism.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Let me just start off by saying, I'm not gonna get in a long debate and a long big issue about it. One thing I can pat myself on the back is saying that I work three hundred sixty-five days a year for my constituents, twenty-four-seven. Any and every time they call, I try to be available. It's never been an issue with me in terms of that. It's not gonna affect me one way or the other if they email or not. My question would probably be is, why not we all get computers as well? What if you don't have a computer? I don't know if all my colleagues have a computer or not. I personally do, but I don't know if they all do or not. Secondly, the importance of getting the information as quickly as possible when it affects your constituents is important. Certainly, I don't have time to sit here for four or five hours a day, but I certainly step in the office maybe three, four times a week, picking up material. I call in and ask questions. Did I get any, if there's an emergency situation, the secretaries are nice enough to contact me and give the information to me so I can address whatever concerns my constituents may have. So, you know, one way or the other, if, you know, if they can't write, when she's off and the letters don't get written or whatever, I'll do whatever I can to pick up the pace, to do what I need to do. But I don't feel it's really, I just feel as though, why make a big issue out of something so small when we all need to be working together? And to me, what I personally experienced in the last few months is a lot of personal attacks, disrespect, unprofessionalism, and it's just ridiculous. Bottom line, we need to all be concentrating and working for the betterment of this city and our constituents and do what's necessary to make Hammond a better place. Set your personal feelings to the side and do what's best for the residents. That's what we're here for. That's what we were elected to do, and that's what I plan to do until the next election, and then I run for reelection if I choose to, if God's willing, or whatever may be, and move forward. But all this backbiting, backstabbing, and this nasty fighting over petty issues needs to stop. And have a merry, merry Christmas.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman, I would welcome Councilman Emerson, Spitali, and Kowinski's, because this is a serious issue. I will talk about Janet's answers after they give their reasons for it, but I'm curious to know what's going on, because it's serious.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I don't know that I have to give a reason, but I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to piggyback on what Councilman Higgs just said. We are here for the residents, and I have had to take a half a cut in gaming money because the budget has been thirteen million short and cut. Had to do it last year, so that means I have half the money for infrastructure for the Fourth District that my predecessors have had, probably even less than that. So in terms of working for the constituents, and this ties into nicely when we're arguing about a thirty-some thousand dollar position, we have had to give up one point three million dollars in twenty-twelve in the Fourth District, as every other district councilperson has had and has had to do, and that's my comment.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Councilman Spitali, I welcome your comments on it, please.
Councilman Kowinski? Councilman Markovich? Talking out of line.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would welcome-
Councilman Markovich.
I would welcome Councilman Kowinski's comments, please.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
We did a budget's cutting move in our budget based on a letter we received that day. So if the budget cut was going to be made, it would have to be introduced that night or wait a year. So I introduced it and people voted their conscience. I do believe that after a lot of discussion, people thought that the position could be handled as one, and it will be a position as one come January first. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I thank them for their comments, but what they think and what they did is not legal, so they think. Councilwoman Vines said that they merged into one. It wasn't merged into one. Linda Clapp is gonna be paid roughly until February twenty-eighth as administrative assistant. There's no money right there to pay Debbie Jimenez. You cannot, by state law, and it's illegal, you cannot pay two people for the same job out of the same fund. We only okayed one employee, one position. That I checked with the State Board of Accounts already. That I did. What we should've done is, you should've went ahead and left the secretary's salary there and the position. Any money left over after that then would have been returned back to the general fund. But right now, Debbie does not have a job. You cannot pay two people for the same position at the same time out of the same fund. As far as Councilman Emerson, as far as your gaming money, half of it, like you said, thirty-five thousand dollars is not gonna save anything here, as far as a position goes. But when some people get more than a one percent raise and so forth and all of that, that's not right either. I haven't had any gaming money. They took all my gaming money, so, you know, you still have half of more what I have and half of more what Councilman Spitali and Councilwoman Vines has. You still have a hell of a lot more gaming money than what we have. But, be that as it may, we don't have a secretary January first. I don't care what you say, what you merged or what you did, it's illegal. And what you did, you left Debbie hanging without a position, and I don't know how it's gonna be rectified. You can sit there and smile, Councilman Kowinski, so I guess maybe you can play Santa Claus and say Merry Christmas to her then. Go there and smile and wink some more. But for you to make off-the-word comments to certain individuals and everything, whether who they're with and so forth and that, that's another thing, too. It's a serious thing. Sit there and smile, yeah, it's funny. But we don't have a secretary as of January fourth, because Debbie has finished January first, Linda works to January fourth, according to this, and after that, she's on the payroll for another two months. I don't know how you're gonna handle it. And if Councilwoman Vines wants to come here and do her old typing and everything, more power to her, or whatever, and all of that. But I'm just bringing out something here that somebody goofed up on, and what you thought and what had happened is not correct, and it's not legal either. So Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night. Thank you.
New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Our first speaker is Reverend Gómez.
Reverend Gómez, good evening, President Opinker and council. I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year from myself, my family, and Church, New Life Worship Center Church. We wanna thank you for everything that you've done in this year, and our prayers are with you. Also, we're planning on having New Life Worship Center Church planning on having a New Year's service till about one, two o'clock in the morning. And I found out by my son-in-law, he's a police officer, and he said they're gonna have a five thousand dollar drop at Aqua Four. As it is, I have not complained about, you know, this club, but I've been sound asleep, and at one time, I was standing on the floor because it was that loud. People yelling, screaming, fighting, leaving bottles, leaving garbage there, and our whole neighborhood is full of cars. Russell Avenue, Anne Avenue, the whole parking lot for the charter school, and even some on State Line, and across Holman. And if, you know, if they're going to do that, you know, I feel that the council, whoever's in charge, we need some security there. At least four police officers, squad cars. Because, I mean, it, they, that I know of, they have never dropped a five thousand dollar, you know, ball for their constituents or their, you know, people that go there. And so I wanna know if there's something that can be done to protect us, since we're going to be there. They even take the church's parking lot also, when they have all this, you know, they have something that attracts people into their club. And we have no one, if we were to go out at that time and we come back, we have no parking space. And everyone's afraid to leave their homes at that time. It gets that bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Gómez. George Stoya. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a public expression in?
All right, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like all of those before me and all those behind me, I spent most of this weekend in a state of shock, sadness, and outrage over the massacre that occurred in Connecticut. After a while, I got my head to clear a little bit, and it brought my thoughts to Hammond, Indiana in October of two thousand nine. For in October of two thousand nine, we compelled the vacation of twelve sex offenders and child molesters from the LaSalle Hotel because they resided within one thousand feet of parked property or a school. It doesn't take a lawyer to conclude that if we can prohibit child molesters and sex offenders within a thousand feet from the school, we can prohibit people with firearms within a thousand feet of a school. So I suggest to you that with all dispatch, this council consider a local ordinance prohibiting people possessing firearms within a thousand feet of a school or property like our state statute, in that you contact your state senators and your state representatives to put the real teeth on this. The child molester statute we had made it a felony for violation. A state criminal statute will similarly attach felony sanctions for those people who carry firearms within a thousand feet of a school or parked property. And then a final note, just let me say at the expense of being sued by the ACLU, I wish you all a blessed Christmas.
Thank you, Attorney O'Connor. Councilman Markovich.
I commend Counselor O'Connor, but I don't know if he's aware that we went through that once before already about carrying firearms by the state statute, that they're not allowed in any building where there is a court or a judge, so you cannot carry a gun here. We went through all of that. I believe we got sued previously already because people right to bear arms. I know we gotta do something. I'm not here to debate you. I'm sure a lot of people are in favor of the same thing that you are, but we've, I think we went through that about a year or so ago here, and we're sued about carrying firearms in parked property and so forth and all that. If and when Congress, the Senate, and the president wants to do something, that's what it is and that's where it's at. And I'm sure now with this happening, especially before Christmas, that they know that they're gonna have to do something, whether they get rid of these AR-15s or whatever and all of that. But, you know, the gun lobbyists, they're very powerful and so forth and all of that, and the only thing we can do is pray to God or whoever we worship and just say that people start getting their senses and nothing like this happens again, because we're all shocked about. We all have kids, we've all been parents and so forth and all of that, and that's it. Thank you.
I would just point out that the existing statute concerning sex offenders and the thousand-foot prohibition has been on the books for seven years now without challenge and has been effective without the state. And if people are going to resort to, "God help us to stop this," or pray to God, then God help us.
Have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?